All right, the time is now seven o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Gibbs, please read the statement of compliance.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one, notice that this meeting has been properly advertised in Daily Record and Suburban Trends. Its agenda has been posted at the appropriate locations, and a copy has been filed with Paquannic Township Clerk.
Thank you. Please call the board.
Mr. Blumer?
Here.
Mr. Cerisi?
Here.
Ms. Dempsey?
Here.
Mrs. Esposito?
Here.
Mr. Gitten?
Here.
Mr. McSweeney?
Here.
Mr. Pompeo?
Here.
Mr. Senick?
Here.
And Ms. Shenton is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Eleven one, please stand for the flag. Okay, good evening. Welcome to our February twentieth regular business meeting. Tonight, the board will receive a presentation from Mr. Shea regarding E-Rate, which concerns FFA Agenda items one twelve twenty-four and one thirteen twenty-four. Additionally, once again, our students have achieved milestones and success that the board would like to acknowledge. First, congratulations to Addie Van Letten for reaching the milestone of five hundred career rebounds. Second, congratulations to the Paquannic Percussion Group for placing second at the West Milford Competition. Third, congratulations to the PTHS Competitive Cheer Team for winning their competition over the weekend. Fourth, congratulations to the PGHS Swim Team for setting a new school record in the men's two hundred meter relay, and best of luck to them at the meet of champions. And last but not least, congratulations to Ryan Troclar for becoming the Group One State Champion in the four hundred meter men's dash, and for setting a new school record of forty-nine seconds, forty-nine point ninety-seven seconds.
Very fast.
Okay, additionally, tonight, under FFA Agenda Item one eleven dash twenty-four, the board will vote on naming our main gym after Ruth Kellett, who was a former teacher, coach, athletic director, and mentor to many in Paquannic. If approved, this will be the first step in the process that will culminate in a naming ceremony before the start of the next basketball season. The board has received testimony from her formal students and players, and personally, I feel the dishonor is well deserved. Last, I know many of you are here tonight to voice your concerns and give input concerning the freshman baseball team. The board wants you to know that we welcome you to the meeting, and we look forward to hearing from all of you. For the record, the board has not restricted any resources to the baseball program in any way, nor were we asked to approve any new resources. We understand that there are concerns over the freshman team that came to light over this past weekend, and we look forward to hearing from you all, and then working together to support the championship baseball program that we have in Paquannic. And for your information, if you do want to speak about the baseball program, you can speak during the first public comment session, because that is an agenda item. And now I'll pass the mic to Dr. Portis.
Thank you, Mr. Senick. Before I provide my report, I'm going to send it over to Emily and Caitlin Zagler for the student representative report.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So glad to see you all again tonight. Here are the updates. The hundredth day of school was this past week. There were many different celebrations throughout the district. Here at PTHS, Mr. Honig's marketing classes made a video highlighting their favorite moments from students all over the first hundred days. The Winter Ensemble Concert was held this Friday. The jazz band Winter Percussion, The Noctis, and Winter Guard performed. There was also a sneak peek of Beauty and the Beast. Winter Cheer took first place in their last competition this past Sunday. The boys and girls basketball teams are heading into state tournament play. The boys will play at Vernon tomorrow at six P M., while the girls are home against Lenape Valley at five P M. tomorrow. Come out and support. The boys' basketball game had their senior night last week. Congratulations to our three senior players and our two statisticians. Congratulations to Chloe Vasquez, who surpassed one thousand five hundred career points last week, and to Carson Kaluko, who surpassed one thousand seven hundred career points. Both seniors are finishing up fantastic basketball careers here at PTHS. Congratulations to Addie Van Letten, who reached a milestone of five hundred career rebounds this past weekend. Congratulations to Ryan Troclar, who is Group One State Champion for four hundred meter, and breaking his own previous school record. Congratulations to the boys' four by four hundred meter team of Ryan Troclar, Luke McGory, Nathaniel Krefeld, and Derek Luttenberger, for placing second in the Group One State Championships. Good luck to the four by four hundred meter team who will compete in the meet of champions. Sofia Clutcha was the first female in school history to win the NJJACK for wrestling two weekends ago. And congratulations to Sofia Clutcha and Gavin Wiz for advancing to regions for wrestling. Emily will finish up the rest.
Hello. Hosa organized a blood drive here at PTHS last week, and over fifty students and staff donated blood. The juniors will be taking the NJGPA assessment the week of March eleventh. Mr. Hazler will be meeting with the junior classes next week to talk about the testing with the students. Junior meetings are taking place with counselors this week. Students will be learning about the college application process and planning out next year's course schedule. The World Language Honor Society inductions will be held on March seventh here at PTHS Auditorium at seven P M. The National Honor Society inductions will be held on March fourteenth, also here at PTHS, at seven P M. The SATs will be taking place here at PTHS on Saturday, March ninth. This is the first time the SATs will be fully digital. Students at PTHS took the PCTs online this past October, so it gives us some practice to get ready. Course recommendations and requests will be made available to PTHS students and eighth graders on Thursday. This is the first steps of the scheduling process for students next year. Mr. Hazler is meeting with the whole peer leaders at their monthly meeting to discuss leadership strategies and to do some cooperative activities with the group. The guidance department is sponsoring an FAFSA night for senior families who will need assistance in completing the FAFSA for their college application process this Wednesday night at seven P M. It is a free program for parents. That is all. Thank you for your time, and have a great night.
All right, thank you, Caitlin and Emily, and best of luck in your state game. Hope goes very well. And just one, one quick follow-up to that, too, is we did have a scheduling concern that literally hasn't been announced yet, so you guys are getting the first scoop on it. The National Honor Society inductions actually get moved back to the twentieth, because we had a conflict with dates. So I'm glad that you brought it up, because it jogged my memory to point that out to people, so make, make them aware of that. And good luck to all the senior families for working with the new and improved version of the FAFSA, which I understand is virtually impossible to use, so. Hey, well, thanks, girls. Last week, I was able, I was fortunate to be able to attend the AASA National Conference on Education in San Diego. Beyond having the opportunity to network with superintendents from around the country, and learn about tremendous resources from some very engaging vendors, some very aggressive, too, I was able to attend roundtable discussions, workshops, and keynote speaker presentations that provided information that I'm excited to apply to our district. Topics ranged from the incredible resources available through A I. to school safety, to ensuring equitable access for all students and families. A few sessions that I was able to attend that really stood out were one was called Do What Matters Most: How to Create a Personal Work-Life Balance. That's one I intend to push out not only to the admin team, but also to our staff. Collaborative approaches, family engagement through key partnerships, that's something we want to keep digging into more deeply. Transformative principal evaluation, obviously that will apply to the principals. Another topic that actually came from a group from New Jersey was about executive coaching. One session that was actually incredibly interesting was about the portrait of graduate processes and outcomes, as they have listed examples from Durango, Colorado, as well as West Claremont, Ohio. And a session that was also provided by a professor from Stony Brook about news and informational literacy. It was really, really interesting. So it's a great experience, and even though I'm still sifting through a lot of work that carried over from my time away, it's well worth it to learn about how I can help to make our district better and provide resources to our staff and our community. Last week, in regards to pre-K, we had, we're part of an ongoing conversation about how to maximize learning experiences for pre-K students. Shared a podcast two Fridays ago. Thank you to the I T department for helping with that, and also co-hosted a parent university last Monday on the topic. What we are proposing is a schedule that will enable the tools of the mind-trained teachers to spend the entire day with their young learners, entire school day, which we are confident will produce outstanding results. We are also aware of the logistics challenges that are posed to families that are involved in ending the date earlier, plus you, and are still working and finding solutions to support our pre-K community. Finally, I know there's been a lot of discussion surrounding our baseball program, most specifically at the freshman level. Full disclosure, it does not seem that the information that I had lines up identically with what is being shared, which is something that's not unprecedented in any professional environment, but I do however want to share a few clarifying points, as I know we're going to be discussing this tonight. There were concerns brought to my attention. This is primarily over the weekend about whether the baseball program has lost resources, and it's not. What is in place for this year aligns precisely what we have had for each of my previous years as superintendent. I was also asked about questions about potentially adding coaches. This time, we're working on completing the budget for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The athletic department has included for consideration formal requests from four different spring sports to add assistant coaches for the twenty-two thousand twenty-five season. Baseball is one of the sports to have made that request, and it is certainly to be given close attention. Another item is per policy twenty-four thirty-one, the authority to eliminate a team resides within board approval. Such a motion has not been made, nor will it. That said, if the number of eligible and capable student athletes who try out for a team does not meet the minimum requirements, obviously, we would not field that team. That does not require board approval. It's important to keep in mind that the head coaches are the stewards for their programs, and we're closely with the athletic director to present proposals on how to improve their programs. Ultimately, those make their way to me, which will then be submitted for board approval. And finally, I just want to reiterate that I truly value being accessible as a district leader. I know a lot of people in the crowd right now, so hopefully you feel the same. But while it's critical that families and students follow the chain of command as they raise concerns, move their way up the ladder, I also wanted to stress that, you know, you can always follow up with me, and I'll provide the best answers I can in as timely a fashion as possible. And then finally, on a totally different note, and a personal note, even though I discourage my parents from watching these, my parents watch a lot of these meetings or watch the video recordings. Tomorrow is my mom's birthday, so if she's tuning in, first, stop doing that, and second, have a happy birthday. That concludes my report.
Mr. Gibbs, do you have a report?
Oh, yes. Good evening. Tonight, we have Mr. Shea, the school district's chief technology officer, who will give a presentation on E-Rate. Mr. Shea?
Can everyone hear me all right? Excellent. It's a pleasure to finally get in front of the Board of Education. Thanks for having me tonight. Thanks to the huge crowd that came out to hear about E-Rate. Maybe that's not what happened, but my, my goal is to keep this high level. I could probably talk about E-Rate for an hour, which is why Mr. Gibbs brought me out. I will try very hard not to do that, but if you have questions, I'm, I'm here to entertain any questions. So first of all, and I think we have a fairly veteran Board of Education, but in case you've never heard of E-Rate, E-Rate was passed with the Telecommunications Act in nineteen ninety-six under the Clinton administration. It's part of the FCC, so it's a federal act. And it's, it was to provide schools and libraries and colleges with internet access, and at the time, telecommunications, so telephones. Later, under the Obama administration, the act was renewed and changed, so instead of telecommunications, that was phased out. And they included infrastructure to support getting internet to students. And then, under the Trump administration, it was renewed again for five years. And the change for that administration was, instead of making funding by building, they made it by school districts. Previously, you only had so much funding per building that you could spend, and now we have it as a whole district, so it's up to the district how to, how to spend those funds, building by building. And presumably, we, we all think it'll be renewed in twenty twenty-five, so we'll see how that goes. So E-Rate is managed by the Universal Services Administrative Company. I always, I always call it USAC, and I always forget what the acronym means, so. So that is the, the, the organization that we answer to for our bid process, and that was established by the FCC. And E-Rate funding is based upon free and reduced numbers, so, and that slots you into a certain calculation. So Paquannic's calculation traditionally has been a sixty forty calculation, meaning that for every dollar we spend, we get forty cents in reimbursement. When I was in Phillipsburg, it was like a ninety-ten, so we, like, every dollar we spent, we got ninety cents back. There are two portions of that. Again, this, this change under the Obama administration, so Category One includes internet service and WAN service. So that includes the internet coming into the building, and then the fiber optic in between buildings, either lit or dark fiber. And we have lit fiber with LightPath. And then Category Two was the change where they phased out telecommunications, so now we, we pay for all that other general fund. But Category Two now covers infrastructure, so anything that delivers internet to students is now covered. So that's your firewall, your routers, your switches, your wireless access points, and potentially even bus Wi-Fi. So if you're providing community Wi-Fi via your busing, that can also be included in any rate. We don't do that yet. So what you're going to be approving tonight, so if you looked at the agenda and you're like, what is E-Rate? What am I, what am I, why am I voting on so much money? And that was one of the reasons I came out tonight. So for Category One, it just so happened, and, and by the way, I'm very glad to be here, this is my sixth month. And in this time, our internet service is expiring, and so is our dark fiber, and so is all of our licensing for our infrastructure. So I got to kind of walk into this. Mr. Jablonski, my predecessor, did not leave me high and dry. He had budgeted for all this, had given me kind of an outline for a plan, and then I executed it with our E-Rate consultant. So I've been kind of planning this out all, pretty much since October. So we, we think we've done our due diligence, and that's why this is on a resolution in front of you tonight. So Category One is, there was a bid for our internet service and to renew our, our WAN, our dark, our lit fiber. The lit fiber was actually still under agreement. We were in year, we're in year one of a three-year contract, but we needed to bid that out, so it would be covered by USAC to be, to continue to be E-Rate. So that one, you're not actually going to see the resolution to approve that. We were in the middle of it. This is more just for formality for the paperwork. The thing that is a difference there is that we are reducing the number of lines. Some of the lines that expired were not renewing. We had set up a redundant dark fiber ring at S J G. that after some discussions with our network administrator and, and Mr. Gibbs, we decided not to renew that, because we think, I think that everything is redundant enough, and we have enough twenty-four seven, three sixty-five warranties, that if anything happened, we'd be back up within a few hours, or by the worst, the next morning. I feel pretty confident in that, and I've worked with LightPath in, in previous school districts. So if someone hit a telephone outside the front of the building, by the next morning, we, we should be back up. And that, you can see the savings there on that line between the bid for the ISP for the internet service, and then the reduction of fiber lines, we should save just shy of a hundred thousand dollars over two years. So that's, some of that, again, is reducing the, the the redundant lines. And then the internet service, the price went down, so, but we also increased our internet speed, so we'll be, this summer, we'll be doubling our internet speed from two and a half gigabits per second to five gigabits per second, hopefully kind of future-proofing, you know, what we're doing in the classrooms. And the reimbursement for that should be approximately thirty-five thousand dollars a year from E-Rate for that portion. And then Category Two, the infrastructure. This was for, again, this is, almost all of our infrastructure was expiring in March, so this will be for April first renewal as well. And so that was for, I, I don't know if I know all the numbers, but about two hundred and forty access points, about forty switches, our firewall. We, actually, this was fairly competitive. We had, I think, four bidders. And so I'm, I'm recommending that we award this to High Point. A, they were the low bidder, and they provided an additional option that the other vendors didn't think of, that we decided, oh, actually, we want that option. And so our E-Rate consultant said that that could be included in this bid. So that'll be a hundred and seven thousand dollars in licensing. And the reimbursement for that should be around just shy of forty-three thousand dollars. So approving both resolutions tonight should secure us in E-Rate funding approximately a hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. I know that was riveting. Any, any questions, anything I can answer for you about our infrastructure? The, the mid fiscal year is not super great, but it's kind of where we are right now. So the, some of these licenses will actually end then on June thirty, twenty twenty-six, but the, the ISP and WAN, right, so those are going to come up again in March twenty twenty-six, so we're going to be a mid fiscal year again renewal. So I'm hoping at some point to, to alter that bid to extend it out. One interesting thing for the Category One bid was one vendor, and this was not what was in RFP, bid to build out our own fiber and sell us the whole thing outright, instead of leasing it slowly to us. That was a very interesting idea. I just, I'm very new, and I wasn't ready to say, hey, I want four hundred and fifty thousand dollars instead of a hundred thousand, so. But that's something that maybe for that next, for that next round that we want to consider, but that's, that's right. So for the WAN and the ISP, we're going to be mid fiscal year again for that.
You mentioned E-Rate consultant. Is that somebody that we hire, or is that somebody that is somebody that is issued to us through the program?
Most districts, every district I've ever been in, and every other district I know, normally has an E-Rate consultant to handle the paperwork of the applications with USAC. And so we, when I came aboard, we had another consultant that I wasn't feeling very confident in, so we, pretty early on, switched to a company called E-Rate Consulting LLC. They won the state contract for the NJ SBA contract, so they're with school boards. And, and I've had an experience with them in the past. I've had other business administrators in the past that, that liked working with them. And so they helped navigate us a lot through this, this process. Some of it was based upon, since we were reducing some of those WAN lines, and since it was mid fiscal year, they really helped us kind of navigate, you know, what that would look like mid fiscal year. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty traditional that you normally have a consultant that's, that's doing a lot of the official paperwork for you. As, as experienced as I am with E-Rate, I wouldn't feel super confident in my abilities to go and post those applications and dot all the i's and cross all the t's legally with, with USAC. So for most of the time, every district has some sort of consultant they lean on to some degree, so hopefully that makes sense. If you're, and I'll, I'll add you to a few cents that you, you maybe didn't ask. Our E-Rate Consulting, when I switch companies, we, we almost halved our, our consulting fees, so it's only about sixty-five hundred a year for the consulting fees. Good questions. That's a good group. Any other questions?
I work with E-Rate on a daily basis. At, at work, it's a very confusing topic. Did a great job distilling it down to something that I think is understandable. And I wholeheartedly agree that we need an E-Rate consultant, because the paperwork is very complicated, and the timelines are complicated, and if you miss one of them, then you have a problem with your funding and everything else, so I'm more in favor of having a consultant.
Thank you. I, I learned a lesson the one year when we went to RFP for the dark fiber. In the wording, I didn't, I didn't put the difference that they could bid dark fiber or, or lit fiber. We only put dark fiber. And so USAC refused us that year, because they said we didn't offer enough of a, of options for, for vendors. So I, I've learned a lot as I went, but I, I've also learned I listen to the counsel, so.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you all for having me tonight.
Thank you. So continuing with my business administrator's report, it was noted that the last board meeting, that there was some question regarding the stage lighting, which some of the bulbs have been replaced. We are looking to having lighting fixtures either replaced or repaired in the near future. Now, the insurance company is going to do their engineer, engineering report for the high school on Wednesday, February twenty-first, to assess the laminated beams in the media center that were damaged in order to determine whether the insurance carrier will cover the damage for the beams. And this is just a reminder for those who have not completed their financial disclosure statements, to let me know if you have any questions or difficulties in submitting your statements. And finally, there will be the nine-month, ninth town meeting on Thursday, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, starting at seven P M., located at the high school auditorium. The town meeting will be a zoning board of adjustment meeting regarding the approval of One School Global's new facility that will be located across the street from the high school. Thank you.
The date for the insurance review was when?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, at this point, I'll open a meeting up to public comment on agenda items. Members of the public may speak once for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock. During this portion of the meeting, the public may speak on any agenda item only during their five minutes, which would include the baseball coaches. If a member of the public raises a question, all questions should be directed to the board president, and please state your name and sign in before you begin.
Hi, my name is Caitlin McSweeney. I'm a senior, and I'm also president of PTHS. PTHS's Future Business Leaders of America are also known as FBLA.
Hi, I'm Jacob Tone, and I'm a junior and also one of the vice presidents of FBLA here at Paquannic.
We are speaking today about C I S sixty-nine twenty-four student field trips and the anticipated approval of sending students to the FBLA State Leadership Conference in March. Thank you in advance for approving it, which I certainly hope you will do. The FBLA has over ninety members, up from around thirty just after COVID. Like many organizations, the pandemic really decreased our membership. We have worked hard to get FBLA back to where it once was, a strong organization that works collectively for the school, the town, and our community. FBLA represents PTHS in many ways. Here in town, we work with the Chamber of Commerce, Chilton Hospital, March of Dimes, and Boys and Girls Clubs organizations on variety of projects. For the last three years, we have partnered with the hospital to bring homemade blankets to the cancer ward each holiday season. Recently, we just completed our latest community service project, the Polar Express, which was a community event that took place here at the high school, and which our club raised toy donations to give to children in need. Our goal is to help make improvements for the benefit of Paquannic and our school. We also represent PTHS at the regional and state FBLA competitions. And if we perform well at states in a few weeks, some of us may have the opportunity to represent Paquannic at FBLA Nationals in Orlando this summer. Only the students with the most innovative and best presentations for business projects advance to the states and nationals.
Our district has been very generous over the years and funds a hundred percent of the cost for our athletic programs. I myself am a varsity cross-country and track athlete, so I do not take the generosity for granted. However, we do not fully fund some of the largest academic programs or clubs such as FBLA, Hosa, and Mock Trial, where our students often compete and represent the school. Sometimes this forces deserving students who worked hard at local competitions to decline invitations to state or national level competitions because of the cost. Our students, who will attend the state-level FBLA competition in March, will pay two hundred and seventy-five dollars out of their own pockets. We would never ask our athletes to pay to attend the state championship game at the Meadowlands or the Prudential Center or another pristine location. I don't think we should ask any student to pay for programs when they publicly represent the school district. In speaking with members for, of FBLA from other towns, those districts fully fund and support their FBLA programs, at least up to the state-level competition. Many students are aiming to compete nationally this year, this, the first time since the pandemic. Although we try our best to fundraise for our trips, the costs are still substantial. Academic programs and clubs are just as important as athletic teams. I ask the administration and board to consider equal funding for all student programs, such as FBLA moving forward. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anne Marie Finnan. I'm an elementary music teacher and the president of the Paquannic Township Education Association. And without offering an opinion about the last speakers, I just would like to commend them. I'm very proud of our students here at PTHS. They were both, I thought, very well spoken and prepared, so it was nice to, to hear that. I wanted to just mention briefly about FFA. I wanted to just mention briefly about FFA 111-24, the naming of the gym for Ruth Kelle. I was so excited to see that you were considering that. In addition to the personal excitement that I have, having worked with Mrs. Kelle, after she kind of reinvented herself as an elementary teacher. Her reputation preceded her. We knew, um, her, all of her accomplishments at the high school level and as a coach. And then she became an elementary gym teacher at SJG. And at the beginning of my career, I was lucky to work with her. So, um, I, I know many of my colleagues share, um, you know, my, my joy in, in hearing that she will be recognized in this way. But I think in a broader way, um, anytime a decision is made to name a large, important space after a staff member, a former staff member, it really serves as inspiration, um, to the whole community, to the students who are here and as I said to her colleagues, um, and, and people who have followed in her footsteps. So, um, thank you very much for, for making that happen and, and voting on that tonight. Um, I think it's a really wonderful thing for our community. Mr. Senick, uh, would it be okay if I quickly announce the three winners since we have a little audience here of our friend of education? I won't, I, thank you, sir. I won't, uh, take up, um, too much time, but just to say that the PTA is honoring our friends of education tomorrow. Um, the board, of course, is invited and the three winners are, um, Mr. Jeff Brunner, Mr. David Cole and Mrs. Kathy Chicalo. Um, and we are just thrilled to be able to thank them for their many, many years of ser- service to our schools and to our students. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Kristy Friedman. I'm at 12 Elizabeth Avenue and I'm here to speak about the baseball program. So, um, I just wanted to thank the board for making your statement earlier. I think that alleviates a lot of stress from the community, um, to know that there will in fact be a freshman baseball team this season. And I hope that the opportunity for all three teams continues and is a priority, obviously as long as enrollment continues to be as is. So, um, as a little league volunteer and a mom to two young baseball players, I know that, you know, especially the freshman community this year will feel a little bit better knowing that there will be the opportunity this year. Um, with that said, I believe the big problem and cause for stress is that, um, the last few years, the freshmen and JV programs have become a lot for one coach to manage. So, um, it's my understanding, last year's freshman team played a very limited number of games, sometimes due to lack of umps, sometimes due to the fact that one coach simply can't be in two places at one time. On the other hand, I know it's been suggested that the varsity team should reassign their assistant coach to help alleviate the stress from the JV and the freshmen. That would leave the varsity with one coach. One coach for a varsity team with 16 to 20 young men. One coach to coach third as a player or an, an available volunteer when one is ready and available to coach third base. So I feel like that's kind of the bigger problem. And I have a few questions that you may have the answers to now, or maybe it's just worth investigating. So, um, has anyone analyzed enrollment data for the high school sports programs? And if so, have you considered reallocating funds to support teams with highest enrollment? Has anyone utilized data from Paquonic Valley Middle School Baseball Program or Paquonic Little League to make projections for the incoming enrollment numbers? Last year, sixth grade had 28 little league boys, 25 seventh grade and 18 eighth grade. That's 71 boys. And has the athletic department considered looking for volunteers who aren't also full-time spring coaches in other sports and are therefore more available to our players? Thank you.
Anybody else? Just, you know, you do not have to state your address, just, uh, your name.
Uh, Matt Ringan. I'm a Paquonic graduate and also now a resident. I have two boys ages nine and 12, well, 12 as of Thursday. And I was planning to speak here tonight and spoke to a couple of you. And I was planning up to come up here and share that, uh, I am on the little league board. A lot of what you're referencing tonight was probably related to a post that we created, um, to bring awareness to members of the town of what was presented to kids. Whether the communication breakdown is what it is, um, we can, we can debate that in another, at another time. But what is concerning and what I'll share is you have a program that Christie just outlined, both softball and baseball, that over the last six years, as I've been a member of the board, has seen our enrollment go from 370 some odd boys and girls to almost 500 boys and girls. It is a thriving program. Uh, it will be, can continue to be a thriving program because of the support of this town. And last year was probably our most successful season, probably dating back to, I think, 1988, maybe? If I had to, I think Sam was a graduate around then. Um, so he can attest to that. There you go. So there you go. So, um, probably one of the most successful season they had. And I, and I've heard many things, well, yeah, they've had some great, they had some great horses last year. They had a great senior class. But I think because of the leadership of that program is the reasons for part of their success. And that leader of that program then went on to win a soccer championship. So I think he's pretty qualified of running a program. And when that leader comes to and makes, I guess, a decision in his own head, whether that's communicated effectively or not, that he needs a fourth coach. While I understand a budget may be approved a year prior, we're, we're probably not talking about a lot of money in the grand scheme of things to be able to pivot. We'd made reference earlier tonight about lights being replaced on a, a stage. I understand that's maintenance, but you could pivot and find, find money to, to repair those lights. And if that coach thinks that that's for the betterment of the program, he's probably right. Last year's program played, I believe it was seven, maybe eight freshman baseball games. When freshmen played, the JV did not. When JV played, the freshmen did not. So they might be practicing once or twice a week. With another coach, the program can build. Those kids can build and develop their skills. I commend these two students behind me who brought up the cost of their FBLA program. What they probably don't know is some of the costs that go in for parents for, 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 uh, the sports that they play and the equipment that they bring to this program. I know there's parents up here that can relate to a $400 back cost. So, but that's new that here and there. I commend that they came up and, and gave this speech to you guys tonight. So what I would ask is, is can we adjust? Can we find money to support that program this year with an enrollment? As I understand it, 13 today. And I know that there are others waiting in the wings to sign up from what I understand. Can we pivot? Can we look at adding another coach? Cause it'll be beneficial to the program today. It'll be beneficial to the program next year and three years from now, when my son, if he still decides to play baseball, is in this school. So I would ask you to consider that. As I know that long-term, and it's not just this sport, because softball's coming behind it. Softball's got a very high enrollment of girls in eighth grade. You're probably going to see 12 to 15 girls that could potentially sign up next year to have exclusively a freshman team. They only have three coaches as well. So that means one coach has to stay down and now you've only got one varsity coach again. I would ask that you consider this and I'll end by saying I had Ruth Kelle. When I was in high school as a coach, she was a phenomenal woman and she deserves that, that, that honor. Thank you.
Goes a crowd? Little league. We brought the registration numbers. The registration, I think, ended yesterday, but these kids were told, I don't know how many weeks ago, that registration was done because there's not going to be a freshman team. People went home, they heard about it and most likely probably did not sign off. Registration should be reopened and this team should be advertised that they're going to have a team.
Uh, Sean Dempsey. I had a whole thing planned here. But a lot of questions were answered and I'm glad there's discussions and you guys are aware. Um, just a few quick questions. As Matt Ringan, uh, greatly put, is there a way we can pivot to hire a coach for the season? If there's no money in the budget, would it be possible for us to fundraise for that coach? And is there a chance, if there's no money in the budget, of asking a teacher maybe to be the supervisor and then looking for a volunteer to coach that team? Um, there's probably five or 10 fathers out there that would happily volunteer to take that team. Thank you for your time.
Uh, Glenn Corman. Um, my question is, it appears that the board and potentially the administration don't seem to be on lockstep in regard to having the freshman team. Since it was communicated to the boys, uh, at the team meeting or the baseball meeting on the 31st, and then again to the parents on the seventh. So I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement or you're all in agreement along with the powers that be to run the program and to ensure that there will be a freshman baseball team. Because there seems to be differing information what we received tonight as to what we were told weeks prior. So I don't know if everybody's in unison here with what's going on. But it would be good if everybody was on the same page and the message that was delivered to the kids first and then to the parents second was the same, because it's not right now. So is there any way to confirm that will be done? You know, by the board? Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. So I want to answer that last question from Mr. Corman. The only person, well, not person, the board can eliminate a team. The board has not voted to eliminate the freshman baseball team. The board is, the board is not going to vote to eliminate the freshman baseball team. That being said, the procedure of how that gets put together is not the board's responsibility. But we did not eliminate the freshman baseball team, nor do we support elimination of the freshman baseball team. I don't think, I'm not going to speak for Dr. Portis, but I don't think he supports that either, but I'm going to let him speak for himself. As far as the budget, the budget's put together for an advance last year. And then the presentation of how many coaches we're going to have gets provided to us by the administration. The coaches that we're voting on tonight are the same coaches that we've approved for the past three years with the same exact program, same number of teams, nothing has changed. Because like I said, we haven't voted to change anything. So as far as we're concerned, we're having a freshman baseball team. Assuming there are the kids to support it, which from what I'm hearing, there are. And I'll, Dr. Portis, answer the rest of the questions. Sure. Right. I understand that Dr. Porz is going to answer that question.
All right. Appreciate it, everybody. I took a lot of notes. Yeah. Well, I want to make sure I get it right or close enough to right. I don't want to view the video like my parents. Um, so first, uh, bless you. Thanks to both Caitlin and Jacob for speaking. Very proud of what our FBLA members are doing. And it's not just what they're doing competitively, but also their contributions back to, back to the community. Um, and it, it's a, it's a lot of work and we don't take that lightly. As far as the funding of trips and making it equal for FBLA, FBLA and athletics or other extracurriculars. I've literally done no preparation about that. First I'm hearing about this, but this is something that we'll, we'll certainly look at regarding, you know, how, how we do fund these types of programs and what is in place for that. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. I cannot give you any kind of concrete answer, but I look into it. Um, and thank you, Ms. Finnan, for coming up as well. Um, it is, I, I didn't realize that, uh, that Coach Kelle had been a colleague of Ms. Finn's. So it's really nice to hear that, that personalized approach. Um, and I, I do think, I agree with, she said something about being an inspiration to know that, um, one of our staff members can rise to that, that rarefied category of having a very large facility named for her. And it's certainly not something that was taken lightly. It was a, it was a pretty long process. We made sure that we had effective policy in place, um, as well as an awful lot of research that went into it. And I have to say, um, I, I think she might actually be watching, uh, Coach Biondi was an enormous resource to help me, to help Mr. Lopez, to help Mr. Hazler to gather more information about, uh, Ms. Kelle. We don't plan to name too many things, if not anything else, after anybody. So this is really a hu- huge honor and we certainly feel that, um, that the individual being honored warrants such, such special treatment. Um, and also I'd like to just express my support for the selections for the Friends of Education honorees. Uh, we've certainly been friends to education, to, to families, to students, uh, to our staff. So congratulations to all three and I'll look forward to seeing each other tomorrow night. Um, and then in regards to the baseball, um, so what we're looking to do, and I had a pretty lengthy meeting earlier this morning, going over it of looking at making sure that we have, um, sub varsity teams that, that can play. And I'd be careful not to say that one, that they're both going to be exclusively JV and freshmen. You might have to change the composition in order to ensure that you get enough games. And, um, not a lot of schools currently have freshman programs. So we want to make sure that we're giving kids an opportunity to play and to learn and, and to grow. And actually, it's interesting, we did lose a lot of games last year, um, from the schedule because of the absence of, of umpires as well as other factors. I did volunteer to be an umpire. I would have been universally disdained for it, but trying to prove a point that we want to get the kids getting, getting games. And that, that volunteering still is out there. As far as analyzing data to anticipate what, what our future needs are going to be. Yeah, that's actually in the, um, in the proposal I have for the 2025 budget. We actually have projections based on sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade enrollment in baseball. And that really helps us to make informed decisions. I realize with certain things in education, there's guesswork, but if you have actual enrollment numbers, there's always some type I realize with certain things in education, there's guesswork, but if you have actual enrollment numbers, there's always some type of attrition for any athletic program or really any program. But with that in mind, we, we're, we're looking at um, maintaining what I would describe as a robust um, baseball program and we're fully aware that that comes from the feeder program. You know, the kids don't all of a sudden show up at high school and be well prepared. It, it starts T-ball. Um, it's reinforced at home. Um, and then as far as uh looking for volunteers who are not full-time coaches in other sports, so we can put out a, a call see if anybody else is interested in helping to support the baseball program. It is better if it's somebody who's in-house, gives us a little more flexibility with how we can deploy them. Um, and as far as uh the comments being, um, it's for the next speaker about the comments being consequence of a post. Um, that, that is the, that was what first really caught my eye. That was, that was texted to me on Friday night. Um, I was on a three-hour different time zone difference, but that was uh, it, it was something that definitely caught my attention. And then I have fielded a few questions, um, certainly over the weekend as well as into today. Um, and then just as far as debating the communication breakdown, um, I'll never do the blame game. So if, if there was a communication breakdown, wherever the source is, um, I, I'm not worried about that. It's uh, I don't think I fully understood what was going on and therefore we are going to do blame. It comes back to me, so please don't worry about that. I would not point the finger at somebody else. Um, agreed, certainly a thriving program. Last year was um, our most successful year since the Sam Cerisi era. Um, I know we've had other successful years and um, you know, you, you brought up that sometimes, some people wanted to ascribe that to having great kids and we do have great kids. Bill Belichick said players win championships, coaches have to be there to provide them. And I actually made a note to myself in here that success doesn't need to make excuses. And certainly what we're seeing in this program, no excuses need to be made. Um, I agree that Coach McBurney is a great leader. Uh, certainly it has a phenomenal track record. I believe I refer to it as the McMagic when we're talking about the girls soccer team. We are looking at the logistics of how, of how we can make our pr- our program as effective as possible. Um, there are systems that we follow in terms of, of budgeting and allocating. Um, we're, we're already in the process right now of looking at next year and um enrollment is a huge factor and you know, there, there are other considerations that we look at there, but uh, enrollment is big because we do want to make sure that um, we're providing opportunities for kids to be as connected to the school as possible. Um, and thank you also to Mr. Ringen for, for voicing your support from having been coached by uh Ms. Kellit. I think it's really important that people are aware too that she, she had a huge impact not just as a trailblazer on our female athletes, but also on male athletes and our colleagues. And that's really, it's quite a wide range of influence. As far as the registration, um, so somebody brought that up to me this morning. We can reopen that. Um, and you know, we're, we're not going to do it on the slide, so that would be something that we would make sure um, is pushed out there. I don't fully know the logistics. I can't pretend to know them, but there are people who are paid to know the logistics of that process and I'm sure that they will manage it. And I will, I will share that I made that comment. Yeah, as, and as far as, as far as you know, a- any steps for, for this year, um, in terms of looking volunteers. We, we did have a pretty long meeting this morning. Um, I did not meet with the, the baseball coaches. They were, they were, they were actually teaching. Uh, but I spoke at length with Mr. Sulpina about trying to find creative solutions in order to provide the support. I mean, really we have, we have in place what we had in place when we won a championship last year, but I'm not a huge advocate for, well, it worked last year, it'll work again. So um, I, I promise nothing other than effort, but we will continue to look at um, not just for this year, but moving forward, what we can do to support really all of our programs. And then in terms of, in terms of the communication, uh, not being lockstep with what uh was communicated to kids and families. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll wear that because I was informed that there was something going on. Um, I don't think I understood exactly what it was, but that was most likely me not listening as well as I should have. So um, moving forward, I'll make it a point to ask more clarifying questions and really understand things. I've been a part of sports for my entire professional career. Actually before I was a teacher, I was actually a basketball coach. Um, and I realized sometimes you don't have the numbers and a program doesn't run. Um, but if you do have the numbers and they're capable, like you don't want kids picking up a, a baseball bat for the first time as a freshman in high school. But um, if you can support it, the program should run. Um, and then yeah, in terms of consistent messaging is more, you, I guess, in my notes I wrote down, there was a consistent message, but yeah, it differed from my understanding, but that was uh, that, that has since been cleared up for me. And then um, yeah, and then there was a follow-up question and or Mr. Senek was responding about reopening registration. And that, that's in the works and I'm sure the athletic department will communicate that out. Thank you.
Just one more thing. If you have a concern about anything, we all have email addresses, right? And you should be encouraged to reach out to us. That's one of the reasons why we're here, to give you real information and to respond accurately to your concerns. It's good that you came to this meeting. It's good that we had this dialogue back and forth. Um, if we don't have it, then we don't know what your concerns are and what the issues are that you would like us to address. So if something like this comes up in the future related to another issue, I would encourage you to reach out to me, anyone else on the board. And ask us, or Dr. Portis obviously, uh, and ask us these questions that you want answers to. You're entitled to get an answer. And we're here to give it to you. So thanks for coming tonight as well.
And one, one thing I'll add is like every now and then I'll have somebody reach out to me and I'll ask, have you spoken to the teacher? Have you spoken to the coach? Have you spoken to the supervisor or whoever? Um, just to ensure that we're following the chain of command, but it sounds like that's what you've been doing. So again, to, to echo your sentiment, uh, one of the advantages working in a smaller district is that you become a lot more accessible. You know, one, one of my jokes about that is the drawback because you're also a lot more accessible. But I'll take the benefit of that way over the cost because you have a much better sense generally speaking of, of the real I guess the tenor of the room and how people are feeling, wh- what's concerning the community. So yeah, I, I agree with you. Um, you know, we're not going to, we're not looking to duck away from anything. You know, it's we're all working together.
Okay, uh, moving on to the approval of the minutes, I'm going to ask Mr. Gitten to approve the minutes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the January twenty-second meeting and the February fifth meeting.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes, to January twenty-second and I will abstain on February fifth.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes, so January twenty-second, abstain to uh February fifth.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes, to January twenty-second, I'll abstain from February fifth.
Mr. Pompeo?
Same, I will uh, yes, to January twenty-second and abstain from February fifth.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that moves us into approval of our action items. The first item up is uh PMC. Before I ask Mr. Cerisi to move PMC, I would like to make a motion to withdraw item PMC two oh two dash twenty-four. And the reason for withdrawing is because this item never went through a workshop. So I'd like it to be withdrawn from this agenda tonight. Put into a workshop discussion on March fourth, where we can discuss it in public. And then put on the agenda for the fourteenth of March for an actual vote. So I make a motion to withdraw that.
A second.
Question, discussion on that? Mr. Gibbs, call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the balance of the items under PMC, I'm going to ask Mr. Cerisi to move those, please.
I would like to move PMC one ninety dash twenty-four through PMC two oh one dash twenty-four.
Second.
Any other question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
I would like to have something to say.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, cool. Um, first of all, I want to thank all you guys, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out tonight. Um, I appreciate that you showing the passion of the support of Golden Panthers. Doesn't matter what it is, whether it's baseball, softball, lacrosse, band, cheerleading, uh, this is what this town's all about. I also appreciate Dr. Portis, based on the information uh that was given to the parents and the players, that he is going to open up the signups for additional time for them to do this. I would suggest that take quick advantage of that. Second, that window opens, it's kind of like when Joe orders the, you know, the crunchy uniforms. Um, get that done. And since Mr. Ringen brought it up, I would like to uh, just let you guys know that way back when, um, it's always been prepaid coaches, a couple volunteers and um in reality, there were cuts of typically forty kids from each team back then. And it's always been one coach. I did some digging myself. And right now, most schools have exactly what we have, if they even have a freshman program. And it is group three and group four schools that typically will have an extra coach. So I just want you guys to understand that we are doing what we can. And as uh Dr. Portis has said, we will definitely look into that for the future. Um, and as long as you guys keep running the program that you're running and having more kids coming out and playing, that's, that's exactly what we want. This is the kind of problem that we want, really, is the best way to put it. Um, and once again, I, I do want to thank you guys for coming out. And I do want to reiterate what um, Brian said. It's better to uh get an email or a phone call from you guys than to sometimes find things out on a Friday night on Facebook. Just, I just want to put that out there, okay? So thank you.
I'll open it up to anyone on the board that wants to make a comment on that.
Just uh, want to thank everyone for coming out. I think it's uh, it's important that there, that everyone comes out and fights for their kids. Uh, and you get the answers that you need. And I want to make sure that that was met today. Um, as they've mentioned, the emails are open, doesn't need to end today as far as the communication. The door should always be open and not just for baseball, but um, whether it's clubs or any other sport. I also want to make a, an official movement that we never refer to any sports error as the Sam Cerisi error ever again.
Second.
Motion passes.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. McSweeney. Would you please move CIS?
Yes, I'd like to move CIS sixty-eight dash twenty-four through CIS seventy-two dash twenty-four.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Blumer. Would you please move the items under FFA?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move FFA one oh six dash twenty-four through FFA one fourteen dash twenty-four.
Second.
Any question or discussion?
Yes, real quick, uh, with FFA, there's not really always a very exciting vote, right? It's usually PMC, we hired a new administrator or whoever it may be, but um, I will say that FFA one eleven dash twenty-four is probably one of the coolest FFA votes that I think um, the time my, you know, five and a half years on the board has, has been. So very excited for this next stage. And definitely looking forward to the next step of now the planning of it and all the uh logistics of it. So very, very excited for that one.
Yeah, related to that, I just wanted to thank Coach Biondi also for coming to the last meeting, even though several of us were not able to be in attendance. I watched the video um, and we already knew what a amazing person we were going to be honoring by voting on this, by her presentation and really speaking from the heart of having been a player and then a colleague and, and then go and being a coach and going and having other um, you know, people say, wow, you had the privilege to, you know, know uh Coach Kellit. So um, I'm very excited about that. I think it's an amazing opportunity for our district and looking forward to seeing some nice signage going up on the gym for that.
Yeah, I, I just want to echo too, I was so happy when Coach Biondi came here. We, we've been friends for a long time. Like we used to very excitedly compare notes on press breakers that we had devised and other basketball related things. Like she's, she's truly taken an inspiration from Coach Kellit and and continued to move with it. Um, but what I was really proud of, just as her former colleague and as her friend, was she spoke without notes up there. Like that was all speaking from the heart. Obviously she was very well prepared, but uh, when, when you know, we could only be so fortunate um, to have people speak like that about any of us. And so I thought that that was, that was particularly meaningful. So I'm, I'm glad too that, that it resonated with the board members.
Okay, Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next policy. Ms. Dempsey, would you please move the one item under policy?
Motion to approve P twelve dash twenty-four.
Second.
Blumer, second. Question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Members of the public may speak for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting. And now you can speak about any item that you would like to comment on. If a member of the public raises a question, please direct the question to the board president and state your name and sign in before we begin.
Uh, John Acian, Pumped in Plains, here for the High School Music Parents Association. We have uh, coming up on March third, uh, our a cappella group at the high school. They uh, were approached by um, a recording producer for a cappella groups to record a song to enter into a contest uh, to be on a, a online distributed album. So they'll be here uh, on that Sunday. He's setting aside ten hours to, to do the recording of each part and he'll do all the producing and things like that for them and and submit their uh, recording. Um, he has seen them at past years competitions and, and approached the, the staff to request to work with them. So that, that's great to see. Um, Mr. Gibbs, in your report, you had mentioned a zoning board meeting April thirtieth. You had said Thursday, but that's a Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday to Thursday.
It is a Tuesday, okay. We, we have an activity that day, so that's why I was confused. Okay. As a uh, a, a quick response to a comment made earlier about fundraising for coaches and staffs and things of that nature, I can say that the district is uh, very um, willing to accept donations. I mean, the music parents raise in the order of thirty thousand every school year that we donate to the school to pay for techs, teachers, instructors, and that, that goes on every year. So they're more than happy to accept donations if you believe that's something you need for your activities. Like we have a, I think it's a a, a good problem here where some programs are outsized for the size of our school district. And it's very hard to take a small budget and chop it up into smaller pieces to satisfy all the things that we're asking to be done at this small school. A hundred kids in a marching band. The schools we compete against are huge city schools with three, four thousand students. But the kids are there and we want to support them, so we raise the money or we fork it over ourselves. I mean, we're not going to tell them no, and that's just the nature of a great success to a program here, so the answer is yes. Um, I, I, I had noticed and I just, I don't know if this is, if there's a short answer to this, but if there was uh, maybe a brief explanation to the step raises for some activities versus for some activities versus the small incremental raises for some activities, like what the difference is there? I'm not really sure. That may be, just be like a contract thing that I can't be a part of discussion, but and then uh hopefully you have some announcements about your board retreat. Will that be in board announcements from anyone or? Okay. And then uh if I can have more than five minutes, I just want to read a quick letter. Um, this is from, this is addressed to Mr. Strifer. On behalf of the Salvation Army, I want to thank you for making the supply of Paquonic Band t-shirts available to, available to us. Your donation is greatly appreciated and will be distributed to those who come to our facility each week to use the shower. These men and women are unhoused and have no other access to showers. We provide them toiletries, underwear, socks, and gently used clothing. We always welcome these items and the t-shirts are one of those staples. Thank you for thinking of the Salvation Army for this donation and entrusting us to put them to good use. Sincerely, Major Carl Avery. Uh, that was uh a lot of our trips, our marching band season, our ensembles, we buy shirts, you have to buy extra. Someone's got the wrong size, someone left one on a bus. And it was our supply was getting to the point where we needed to either give them away, throw them out. So Mr. Strifer donated them down to uh the Salvation Army in Montclair. So I wanted to read that. Uh, I don't know if you want this for your records or?
Absolutely. Okay, anybody else?
Uh, good evening. Joe Georgiev, uh just another brief word on the baseball situation. Uh, my son is a freshman who hopes to play. Um, Coach told us at the parents' meeting that approximately forty-two or forty-three boys total has registered. And I happen to know that thirteen of them approximately are, are freshmen. I know all these freshman boys from their involvement over the years with the Little League and uh the Patriots travel team, and some of them have played other club teams and most of them played middle school. And they're all deserving for the opportunity to play. I know everything they've been doing in recent years has been working up to this point, the opportunity to represent and play for their high school team. And it's going to be if there shouldn't be a freshman team and there are some cuts, it's going to be devastating to any of these boys to not make the team. And some of them may not come back, you know, after, you know, after this year. So I, I just hope that something, you know, can be done to alleviate the situation. And I will say that at the parents' meeting, the week after the players' meeting, we were told at the meeting, and I'm only saying this because we were told this in a public meeting, that the one thing that's changed from last year was that one of the paid coaches has a newborn at home, you know, and his time is stretched a little more, and I understand that, and that's great, but it shouldn't affect, you know, these boys. If, maybe if, if that's the case, then maybe we do need to, you know, allocate an additional coach, paid coach to the team if that's what it takes, so. That's just all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the second public comment session. Oh, you got one more? I don't know, Greg, I think I already closed it.
We're not used to so many people.
I waited because I'm not going to talk about any of this, so the pen isn't working either. I know you know who I am. For those of you who do not, who do not know who I am, um, good evening. My name is Melissa Stalmasik, and I am the parent of a senior who will be graduating in June from PTHS. She has currently been accepted into numerous business schools for college and will take the knowledge she has gained from an exceptional business staff and FBLA program at PTHS with her into the future. I am here tonight to ask you all to look into the future of what lies ahead at PTHS for possibly your own children as well as countless others, including my third child, who will one day walk through these doors. A number of years ago, I know some of you were here. I remember the discussions regarding academies at PTHS. At the time, our focus was directed at STEM, aviation, teaching and learning, and allied health. Some of our programs excelled and some had growing pains, while others were completely phased out. I am asking you to now look at the future of our academies and to consider creating one that focuses on business and finance. A number of high schools in our region have the benefit uh have benefited from business programs like these and can, that, that I can't even read tonight, sorry. Um, I need my glasses. A number of schools in our region have the benefit to uh have seen the benefit business programs like these can bring to our districts such as Booton, Jefferson, and Clifton, just to name a few. My hope is that you too will see the benefit that a business academy would bring to our students. The drive behind the academies originally was to fill a niche and gain more students. However, academies are becoming a dime a dozen in all of our districts, as you know, and this makes it difficult to sustain academies that are not popular with the masses. Business, however, is an area of focus that our Paquonic students would flock to. Just look at how many students currently take our business electives. I'm going to ask all of you after May first to look at the PTHS twenty-twenty-four Instagram page and see how many of our graduates will be majoring or minoring in business. By creating programs of interest for our students, future and my goodness, I'm sorry, I can't read tonight. By creating programs of interest for our students, our PV students and others will have an opportunity to benefit and learn from our extraordinary business educators as well as having the opportunity of staying put in our own home district. Lastly, my own daughter at one time was accepted to MCST and chose not to go. After much consideration, she preferred to spend her senior year as an actual high school student rather than a CCM visitor for one year, as most MCST students do. Being in a high school setting as well as part-time business internships during senior year in your home school are more beneficial to some students than others. An academy for business at PTHS would help these students to make the choice to be a Panther until graduation. So I just want to say thank you again for your time and thank you for listening to the kids talk about FBLA. Um, I was very happy that they came up here tonight, and though it really won't benefit my own daughter because she's graduating. Um, and she'd probably not be happy that I'm saying this, so I can say it because she left. Um, I just have to say that, like, thank you for everything that you guys have done for them, and I really hope that they do a great job at states. And I know going forward in the future, um, I just hope that they're able to go back to Nationals again. Thank you.
I do want to say thank you one more time. Everybody, thanks for listening to us. And Dr. Portis, we do have an umpire training program. If you want to come out and volunteer umpire, not any one of you guys. We got some games that you want to get behind and play for these kids. I, I will add that my daughter is part of the Teaching Academy, and what, what a great program that was, just to reiterate, also. I think she's student teaches at either choice or the world guard, I forget.
Hi, Anne Marie Finnan. Speaking about the Teaching and Learning Academy, um, the instructor, Mr. Lefebvre, was honored that in the last week, and I just, I hope you don't mind, Dr. Portis, if I mention it, um, he's been named a teacher that rocks uh by WDHA radio station. He was nominated and selected, and I believe um his um uh the story of, of what he does um for his students at the high school in, in several programs that he instructs um was read on the air, and there's going to be a banquet um where he'll be honored. Um, one of, uh, I, I think there might be twenty-four or thirty from the area from the northern New Jersey area. Um, so um I know he works really hard for the Teaching and Learning Academy and also for um the other student population that he works with, uh takes it very, very seriously and gives his all to it. So we were excited to see him recognized. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for your comments.
All right, thank you. Run through my notes for this too. Uh, appreciate hearing the information about the a cappella group being approached by the producer. Uh, that's, that's, that's pretty incredible, but also a testament to the hard work of the kids and, and their performance, plus the leadership from Mr. Arnold and the, really the whole program in general. Um, thank you for the correction about the uh the April thirtieth being a Tuesday, the Thursday after that's May second, which is a pretty big day in my household. My birthday. It's all about. Nice. All right, um. Yeah, and, and I, I really like the analogy too of the, the good problem that uh since our, our programs are outsized for the size of our district. Um, and it's, I'll, I'll take those problems any day of the week, um, because yeah, you have to figure out solutions to them, but what, what a great thing. Like, you have so many kids who want to be involved in things and, and families who support them, so I like how that was framed. Um, I'm not here to provide praise, but I jotted that down, really liked it. And yeah, as far as the, why there are certain step raises as opposed to incremental raises, um, that, that just comes down to the, what's in the collective bargaining agreement. Um, and we look at getting people increases um as they move along the guide, but also each year you do see small um, we're not small, we see increments, incremental improvements. Um, and then as far as the board retreat, the actual retreat, retreat is going to take place on Thursday, um, which is two days from today, because today is not Monday, contrary to how it feels. Um, we did have a retreat experience of reviewing the self-evaluation. I know you guys talked about that later, but um, the retreat itself is going to take place on Thursday, the twenty-second. Yep, and I really appreciate hearing the letter about the donation to Salvation Army. Uh, the, the generosity of this community is, is remarkable and to know what a difference that can make of something as simple as donating uh t-shirts. And um, it clearly meant something because of the letter that was sent, and I, I encourage it, and I really appreciate hearing about that. Um, and then the next part is about the enrollment numbers, uh about kids, um deserving our support, and yeah, and it, it is devastating to get cut. You know, I, I think a lot about, there's a, there's a line in, in the movie Moneyball about and we all have that point where we find out that we don't get to play anymore, and it happens at different stages, but it happens to all of us. But as best as we can, it's, I, I like the idea of prolonging the opportunity to be involved in athletics for, for kids as well as for adults, but more so for kids. Um, and then as far as the, the business academy, we're actually, we've had some conversations about um different ways that we can um revamp our academy structure, whether it be combining some of the academies, um or bringing in other ideas. I proposed in American Studies Academy, um, the response to that has been lukewarm, and I'm being generous. But we've also have talked about um looking at doing something more with our business program. It's very, it's very popular. Our business department is, is quite strong, and uh we see it reflected in our FBLA teams' um involvement in, in regional, state, and in, yeah, national competitions. And uh yeah, I mean, I'm very, I'm curious to see too how many of our kids do major in business. And then I mean, thirty-five bucks a game behind the dish. I mean, I, I don't have, I don't have great eyesight, but I don't think you need it anyway. Um, when I, when I used to get summoned umpire uh in like a park, I would always tell people I have a Vlad Guerrero strike zone, the older Vlad Guerrero, so if it bounces and it crosses the plate, that's a strike, so. Um, if you're looking to have, yeah, if you're looking yeah, oh yeah, that's great. It's all good. Listen, you, you'll have games that are like fifty-eight minutes. You'll love it. No, but I, I'm, I'm joking, but um it, it is something I, I do say sincerely because um the fact that we have a shortage of officials i- is really troubling, and it's not just New Jersey. I know it's everywhere. So if there's any way that we can, that we can help with that, I, I, I think it's, it's really important. If I get the training, my wife might kill me, so I'll, I'll be talking about signing up for that. That should be fun. And then finally, um, thank you so much to uh Ms. Finnan for bringing up about Mr. Lefebvre, getting the teacher who rocks recognition. It was actually announced on the radio on Friday. Uh, her colleague, Mrs. Brenzinger, is the person who nominated him. And in my as-yet unpublished weekend update that would have gone out on Friday, whoops, uh but I, I want to make sure, I might point to include that because there is a link that's in there that you can click on to, to get information. And it's, it's really wonderful. We talk about recognizing our students, which is so important, but I think it's really important for our staff to get recognized for their hard work as well, so.
Thank you, Dr. Portis. Any uh board member have any unfinished business? How about new business?
So I know um Dr. Portis said he was going to follow up on the request about the FBLA funding, but I just wanted to kind of elevate that to a new business item so that we can keep it on our radar and follow up on it, not necessar- well, since we're in the budget process. Um, but also to maybe just do kind of a holistic look at what, how much of funding for athletics is coming from parent associations and fundraising. Um, as Mr. Nason said, the, we know the marching band and the music department does a lot of fundraising to support some of that. Um, so is, is there funding that can be found in the budget to offset costs for students in some of the more expensive club activities? Or are there other creative ways that we can help support them? Um, it's fabulous to hear that they have ninety students come back after COVID because student groups across every sector are struggling to get, bring students back. Um, and I would hate to have students feeling like they couldn't participate because of financial constraints. So if we can just sort of keep that on our radar and follow up in the future, I'd appreciate it.
Anybody else? Board member announcements?
I have a few.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, so uh tonight, actually, the uh Paquonic uh West Milford hockey team won their state playoff game eleven to one over Nutley. Uh, I think it was a first round of states, so congratulations to them. Um, on February fourteenth, I attended the uh Morris uh Educational Service Commission meeting. Um, we spent a lot of time talking about nursing costs. Um, Morris CSC spends a little uh good amount of time, and we spent a lot of time talking about how they have to provide nursing services to a lot of the private schools in Morris County. Um, the, the costs are going up, but the DOE has yet to raise rates um for this year, so I think that's maybe on the late for the fall, at least that's what the ESC is hoping. We also uh discussed something called an alternative suspensions program. I didn't mention this to Dr. Portis. Um, the program that is for primarily high school students um who are facing um who have been suspended a lot for behavioral issues. Um, so there was a discussion with the ESC, the board, a couple of other towns brought it up. Is that a program that Morris CSC uh runs? They used to run one. Uh, it was an alternative outsourcing of kids, who are sending the kids out to another district, which gets quite expensive. Um, so that was just something that popped up. It was, it was interesting because apparently there's a need in a couple of towns for finding a, an alternative suspension program for these kids in high school who maybe you'll, are facing, would not be able to graduate because they're suspended so many times. That's it.
I have a few. First, uh definitely want to congratulate the recipients of this year's Friends of Education. Uh, it is always, it is a great honor. Um, I do feel it is hard to fill the shoes of last year's recipients, but um uh but no, it's a, it's a great honor and congratulations to those recipients. Um, I want to talk about the uh progress of the Veterans Wall. Uh, Mr. Sennett and I sit on that committee, uh uh it's not a board committee, but the Committee on Establishing the, the Funding and the Plans to Create the Veterans Wall, and you know, Mr. Serakus is here, so it's su- fitting that I'm talking about this. Uh, it was, it was talked about several years ago. There was a big uh display at a football game at one point. Um, and then kind of got quiet, slowed down a little bit, but now we have a Um, and then kind of got quiet, slowed down a little bit, but now we have a very energetic group of residents, alumni, and again, um, some board members that are seeing this through, and this is going to be a great addition to the community. I'm really looking forward to the progress of this. Uh, we've had several meetings, again, just trying to nail down um, the funding and and just the the plans to uh, see this from beginning to end, just you know, discussion of where exactly are we going to have it in front of the school, things like that. So it's really exciting to see this come to fruition after a few years of discussion. Um, and again, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Um, I'm glad that everything was sorted out, situated. Uh, you know, when it comes to any programs, sports or non-sports, the the key word is expansion, right? It's never something that we want to see sunset or go away. Um, if numbers don't call for it, that's one thing, but if it's there, then we obviously are always there to support it. Uh, so again, thanks for coming out, and you guys actually stayed after your comments, which was even more impressive. You guys get to laugh right after that.
Any other board members with any announcements? Okay. Uh, we do have reason to go into executive session tonight, where we will discuss attorney-client privileged matters. No action will be taken, and we will adjourn from there. The board will host the administration in the CAF on Thursday, the twenty-second, for the portion of our retreat that was postponed due to the recent snowstorm. After that, our next meeting will be a workshop meeting, and it'll take place here on three, four at the high school. Again, I want to thank you all that attended and shared your concerns, let you all know that we appreciate you coming here and we appreciate and value your input. Um, and now last for a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into exec?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Good night, everyone.